The June 22nd, 2023 City of Friendswood Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting is now called to order. We will begin by receiving communications from the public. As there's nobody up to speak, we will move on to our next item, which is our consent agenda. These items are considered routine or ministerial in nature and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of items unless a commissioner so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. There's one item, A, consider approving the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Regular Meeting held on Thursday, June 8th, 2023. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor? Motion passes. Next on the agenda are our action items. According to Planning, Zoning, Rules of Procedure, all actions of the commission shall be made by an affirmative vote of a simple majority of the commissioners present at such commission meetings. Item A. Consider approval of a partial preliminary plat of Friendswood Trails, Section 4B and 5A, a subdivision of 29.964 acres of land situated in the William Henry Survey, Abstract 84, and Mary Sloan Survey, Abstract 184, City of Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Aubrey or Becky, would you like to provide the staff summary?
Yes, sir. So this is a preliminary plat for the next section of Friendswood Trails. This is 46 residential lots. It's a mix of 70-foot wide and 90-foot wide lots. The exhibit, I know this was, the PUD for this was approved back in 2016. So the exhibit was in your backup material. So this is a part of the pink lots that are on the PUD plan and some of the orange lots. So their proposed plat does comply with the PUD that was approved.
Okay. Is the applicant present? Would they like to make any comments? And we'll start discussion with Commissioner Sassen.
Yeah, so it's consistent with what we've been doing along, all along. And it kind of matches the plan, so I can't really have any objections to one comment. I did want to put in the record. I'm a little concerned that we're going to have somewhere north of 150 homes going out through one exit entrance, should there be something there. I understand that meets the codes and where we are now. But it does beg the question of when they put the final sections in, that'll add even more houses to what is going to be a single line in and out. Now, I know there's a potential way of getting out through some dirt roads and some barbed wire gates. I would, it would be nice if we could see those upgraded to where the residents actually have an option should something, something bad happen. I know it's not on their property, but they might, the applicant might want to reach out and talk to them about a safety issue since they can't exit through the Friendswood Trails section, the original Sun Meadows subdivision. And so that's, that's my only comment.
Commissioner Rose? Commissioner Conrad? Commissioner Bounce?
No, sir.
Okay, for myself, I had the same comment as Richard, so he kind of took my steam there. We'll just move on. And so we have a motion and a second. All in favor? All in favor? Passes?
Unanimous.
Item B. Consider site plan amendments, screening and landscaping changes for Industry Part 2 located at 4550 and 4552, FM 2351, for the following items. Aubrey, do I need to list, list them at this moment, 1 through 9? Or is it part of the discussion?
Yeah, you can just do the motion to discuss right now and I can do the introduction.
Is there a motion to discuss?
I'll make that motion.
Rose, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Aubrey, Becky, would you like to provide the staff summary?
Yes. So just to explain the request here, this site plan for Industry Part 2 was previously approved by the commission. In your backup material, I included the approved plans. So the owner of the property is now requesting some changes to some of the landscaping and screening that was approved with that plan. Also, in your backup material, I did include, and a couple of you were not on the commission when we considered this application. So just a little bit of a historical background. The original application on this property started with multiple tracts and probably hundreds of acres of land and a request for a planned unit development. We dwindled that down and properties were removed from the PUD and we ended up basically just back to Industry Part 2 with this project. And we met with the property owner, Stephanie. We had actually a subcommittee of three commissioners that met with them. We went through like their asks and looked at our ordinance and kind of came up with some compromises. So that was the document in your background, in your backup material was that final document on what the city was going to do and what the developer was going to do and kind of where we came, you know, to conclusions on that. And so the site plan that was approved was in compliance with, you know, I think we changed five ordinances to make the project work and to be more flexible in the industrial zoning district. So, so now the requests that we have before us are basically changing from fencing locations, types of fences, doing away with some trees that would be behind fences if, you know, if the changes are approved. So we put them on the agenda so we can consider them one at a time. But that's kind of the broad picture. So to move forward with our agenda, we'll need a motion, a second, and a vote on each item.
Can I ask a question? Do we, do we have to do it in that order and the order that's on the agenda? We can move those around maybe? I think some of them are low hanging fruit and one or two of them I'd like to discuss a little more.
That would, go ahead. Go ahead.
So this will be the discussion period, so we can hit items on any of those during this discussion period, then we'll vote individually.
I think the ultimate goal is to make sure there's real clarity to Aubrey and Becky. If only part of them are approved and part of them aren't, then that we are clear on what that is. So it might be that the description of what motion to approve we actually have, it might be a long and involved one.
Okay.
And this way, if, if we decide one should not pass, it doesn't, doesn't get the decline to everything.
Right, right.
Is the applicant present? Would they like to make any comments?
So really, so really, Stephanie Kennedy, I'm with Coastal Vin Engineering. Work for the Partners in Industry, which is the owner of the track and the developer of the property. So really, we went through and we were in construction, we're actually almost through with construction, which is very exciting. And we just kept looking at what the plan was versus how our security system was going to work and everything and looking at on the ground. We just kept looking at it saying, you know, I think we can do this differently. I think there's a better way to do this. And that's where we came up with this alternate plan. And really, we want to just address what your concerns are. So I would really love to hear, you know, what the concerns are, for sure.
Well, you're free to sit, but I'm pretty sure there'll probably be a few questions for you.
You can lift those microphones up too, instead of hunching over.
Commissioner Rose, you going to start the discussion?
I think for the most part, like I said, there's some low hanging fruit with, with ADA parking spaces and gate locations and things like that. I don't really have anything to discuss with those and the fire marshal's notes and whatnot. I guess my big, biggest points would be the eight-foot fence between their property and the Chevron, which I think is a great idea. I've been over there when school gets out. I've seen the high schoolers walking all around that building, behind it, behind the other buildings. I'm only going to guess at what they might be doing back there. So I think it's good they can block that off. If you go next to that, the next piece of property is, let's see, that's Discount Breaks, I think. And they already have a wall in the back and they have the chain link fence. It's already opaque. There's no way you can see beyond that. As long as those guys are there, as long as your clients don't mind looking at them, I don't have an issue with that either. I think it's okay, just to leave that as is. Although their property does go another 20 feet or so beyond there. So if we wanted to have a fence put up along Mr. Rucker's property, it would split the middle of that ditch. It's just in a, and I think they all, they all share that ditch, so I would hate to see that happen. And then you get to the next property, which is Eagle Transmission, and that's all open. So this is where I have my concern is, I think from their parking lot, from the street, you can see back there. I agree, their, their parking lot may not be much to look at either, but it is open. And so I, I think we need some screening back there. I think the zoning ordinance calls for that. There seems to be some leeway of what we can do there with the attachments of what you guys sent. So there, it's, at some point, it says something to the effect of "The commission can determine the required screening after giving due consideration to the intensity of the commercial use, the zoning classification, and the adjacent land uses." So the way I read that, it gives us a little leeway of if we want to impose a different kind of screening or what kind of screening we can do that. So I think they need some trees there to buffer it or they need a fence there. I don't think they need both personally. But I do think that, that portion needs something. And I think that hit most of my nodes. Yeah. So all the other stuff I think I'm good with.
Commissioner Bounce?
Maybe I missed it, but what were the landscaping changes that were being committed to?
Requested?
Item four.
Item four. Okay, I did go through this, I promise.
So there are, there were trees along the, in front of Building A and then Building, I think it was 6 and 3. There was a row of trees proposed and they're proposed, they want to, like, they don't want to put any of those trees in.
Items 1 or, items 3 and 4 are related to landscaping?
Correct. Item 3 was removal of the ones on the back of the building.
I think 4 is an embodiment of 1, 2, and 3.
Yes, 4 is the update to the actual physical plan.
Is that fair? I'm sorry.
Yes, yes. So 4 was, we actually changed a few of the tree locations and moved them to be more advantageous for screening when you're looking from 2051 or from the main roadways.
So, so 4 is where you remove or just move trees around, 3 is where you're requesting to take some of them?
Magnolia trees in there. Like, we changed the type of tree, yeah.
Thank you.
You good? Commissioner Sassen?
Yeah, I, I'm like Commissioner Rives, but a lot of these are design development and I have no problem with them. The one that's of controversial is, is the screening. As, as Aubrey highlighted, we went through extensive negotiations on this, modified a lot of the codes just to comply with this applicant. There were things they were going to do, things we were going to do. This was the compromise that we reached at the end of this, that this was how it would be. If there were changes, other than the design development ones of putting four-foot wide gates and meeting with the fire marshal ones, if there are changes, I'm only willing to consider them if they actually improve the view or the look of the site and make Friendswood a more attractive place. My view is that trees are more attractive than fences, than wood fences. And so my inclination, my recommendation is, is to not go along with one. I'm concerned about, the proposal is to put in a fence behind Chevron, which would comply with the screening ordinance, although I don't think it's as attractive as what was agreed to. The second part is to use an existing fence, which I'm, I have a little bit of trouble with unless there's an agreement to use that existing fence with the other owner, because they could take it down tomorrow and then we don't meet the requirements. If you're, if you're depending on someone else to provide the landscaping or the buffer, you need to either insist that they keep it there or somehow buy it or take over ownership of it. And then just as Commissioner Rives said, the other part has got no boundary. And to me, it doesn't comply with any of the codes that we have. It's just open and, and there is no screening at all. But my recommend, go ahead, my recommendation is to, to deny 1, 2, and I don't like the idea of getting rid of trees. And so, but just to understand what you were saying, Stephanie, I, I didn't write, question, were you going to move the trees somewhere else or just get rid of them?
Oh, for which item?
Item 3.
Item 3.
So we're going to remove them and I'm going to kind of expound upon why.
We move them, not move them. Okay, yeah, okay.
Can I, I don't think I have the power to change the slide, do I?
Do you have the layout on?
Oh, to go to the next.
Oh.
There we go. Guess that's a good one. So all up and along the backsides of these buildings, you'll see Building 6 and Building 5. What we're planning on doing is having a nice bank so we can mow it.
Oh, nice, I'm sorry.
Sorry, having a nice bank so we can mow and maintain the detention pond.
Grass.
Grass. I'll say that a lot of this started whenever we, you know, cleared these detention ponds that were already there. So what happened originally is the Eagle and then the Breakmaster, I keep calling them break inspection. Whenever we first went out behind the property to see what was there, there were these unmaintained jungles that were back there.
Yes, I remember.
They didn't know they had detention pond. They didn't know that they had pipes that went to detention ponds. And so we, we were able to muck a lot of that out and talk to them about, hey, you guys, did you know that you had detention ponds back here? And they didn't know. And they were not maintained. So the solution we came up with, besides the fact they were also encroaching on our property, was to make this a drainage corridor that we could maintain, so it would be up to our maintenance standards and make sure that the drainage did work properly. Part of doing all of that was looking at how we're going to maintain it in the future. And if we have all of these trees everywhere, that does make it difficult to maintain. But the other problem we ran into when we started looking at the backs of these buildings was security. And I remember when we met with the commission to talk about what we were going to do back there. And I remember Mr. Rucker bringing up the idea that, you know, security might be an issue and we need to address that in the future. And at the time, we were, we were still thinking about security. Actually, I think it was last week, it might have been the week before that, our project did get broken into and they stole quite a bit of copper. So one of the things that we were looking at while we were back there, we were talking to our security camera consultant, was he's like, if you put trees here, you're not going to be able to see the backs of these buildings. So if someone comes up to your fence, you, you know, the trees probably might block the view. You're going to have to maintain them very small so that you can actually see through them when you have your cameras up. One of the other things that we were looking at, security wise, he said, chain link would be better because you can see through it. You cannot see through these opaque fences because they create, you know, these kind of dead spaces behind your cameras that you can't see. So really, our concern was more about security when it came to getting rid of those, those trees. And it's the idea also that you really can't see them. When you're out there, maybe if you're walking on the sidewalk on 2051 and you're peeking like between Eagle, the side driveways they have, then you might be able to see the backs of the buildings. And then if you came to like a certain, a certain area, you might be able to see a barbed wire fence. But really, that was also the intent of the barbed wire, is to put razor wire up there and make sure that we have a more secure facility, because we know we're going to have lots of high-dollar items in there that people are going to want to steal and often do. I mean, it's just part of the business, so. I don't know if I can, you have any more questions?
Appreciate the security features. I'm a little, I'm not sure it's to look Friendswood wants of having barbed wires and maybe turrets and attack dogs behind there, but if that's what we need, it's, it's a little, it's a sad side of the times. My view is with a few extra cameras, you can probably do what you need without impeding the original plan. I know one of the things we haven't really talked about here right now, one of the things that's proposed is between the buildings, we had proposed and all had agreed that it'd be a solid fence and now we're talking about this. That's where you're talking about the, the chain link with, with the barbed wire on top. And what, what, as, as Commissioner Rives said, you would, that wouldn't block the place on the end, the auto repair place, from, from just kind of looking straight into your thing. I, I happen to think chain link fences are easier to climb, or maybe barbed wire needs to be cut. I, I don't know. I shouldn't, I shouldn't opine about how different ways I'd break into this place. But anyway, I think I spoke, spoke in my view. I, I have no problem with the, the ADA parking, the gate locations, the fire lane modifications, the four-foot wide gates. I know one of the things you had asked for, it was updated to the permitted use tables, and that was a very important thing for you, and, and I think we accommodated that a few weeks ago. But on this one item of redoing the whole back to something different than what was agreed, I, I oppose that.
Commissioner Conrad?
One of the things that I look at is that, yes, security is always very important.
Turn your mic on.
Security is very important. Having the eight-foot fence will perhaps eliminate a lot of that, but someone who wants to break in, they will go over that eight-foot fence. Now, green space is very important, especially for our town, for our city. I think trees is something that we need to keep planting. We need to have them. I mean, you're going to remove them, you're not moving them, you're not transplanting the trees. There is different kinds of fences versus the eight-foot wooden fence that perhaps can be installed there that will not have the, the barbed wire and all that on it, so that's another possibility.
If we do install an eight-foot wood fence, is what was previously approved, are we allowed to put barbed wire on it?
I really can't answer.
Is there anything that prohibits us from doing that?
Becky?
No, there's, I mean, nothing to prohibit it. Not in, it would in the community overlay district, but we removed this from the COD.
I just feel that that's something perhaps that we need to revisit, since we, there is a security issue there.
Good?
Yes.
So I'm, I'm right in there with Commissioner Sassen. And my question on number 3, removing those trees, is, was it, did you give any evaluation of just moving those trees as opposed to just removing them altogether?
There's not a lot of room left on the site, frankly. I think we could maybe move them over where the entrance driveway is, but that's probably the only location.
Okay. And Becky, maybe this is a question for you, but if they're going to take, take those out, would that be a contribution to the tree fund or how does that work?
No, because they're not existing trees that are being removed. They were new trees as part of the landscaping requirements, so we couldn't require mitigation.
Okay, it was just a general question.
I mean, some other options would be clustering the trees and so I know part of the original, you know, conversations was, you know, given some of the same latitudes to this property that we gave to Garage Ultimate and allowing, like, because they're having these, these storage buildings with these blank walls, they're in essence a fence, which is why we did, you know, why we went with the fences in between the buildings, so. I mean, the screening is already there, but maybe some taller skinny, like Italian cypress, just for the green effect. They don't have big tree canopies and things like that, but we might still get some greenery.
I'll just remind, there's a, a power pole running all along the back too, so we can't go, I think we have to do a size 3 tree.
Class 1.
This is, it's a buffer. It's a landscape buffer to separate the zoning districts.
Yeah, but the, the wall is already
Right.
Like a big blank wall, and so.
Yeah, the requirement is because the businesses in front are zone CSC and we're zoned industrial. That was the only reason. It wasn't because we're along a right of way or anything like that. It was just because they're CSC and we're industrial.
Okay. But I'm, I'm along the lines with Commissioner Sassen on the fences though, so. But that's the end of the comments. Okay, so we'll move on. We'll, we'll go through each of these separately for approvals. So for Action Item 1.
Can I get one other clarification for Stephanie real quick? So on the original plan, like back by Building 11, there were four trees proposed back there. And that's where y'all are changing from the aluminum fence to the wood fence.
Correct, and it was just to match the other side, yeah.
Yeah, and now there's only two trees there, so you're doing away with two of them back there as well?
So there's not a lot of room between our parking lot and our building and the, we were a little bit afraid of the roots getting, causing issues over there, so we decided to invest and remove them since we already had the required number of trees for the site.
This was the way it went, but it's not. There are trees all around here. One of these drawings shows them. Oh, yes. These are the trees they're taking out. These are class 1 trees that were proposed to be magnolias, I believe. And these are crepe myrtles. These are not there right now. But these are, they're proposing to remove those. These are what was in the original plan that they had, we had agreed to, and now they would take those out with, with the other changes. But they're not physically there. They're not physically there, no. There would be new trees, yeah. Did you guys see the trees trying to pull that?
I don't have any of that.
As I understand it, these are the one trees that were proposed to be put in and are not longer. They're class 1 magnolia trees, I think they proposed. These are crepe myrtles. And I think the crepe myrtles are staying no matter what. It's not part of the discussion. It's just these trees. That's like 25 of them or something. There's a lot of them. I counted it three times. I keep forgetting.
I believe the trees that we were removing, we're talking about removing along the banks in the backs of the buildings, those were wax myrtles.
They stand up there.
Currently, there's none there. But Aubrey, you were asking about the ones along Building 11?
Mm-hmm. They're back, like behind Bill, like back here.
There's four.
Yeah, there shows four on the original plan.
Yeah.
And there's two on the revised plan.
This is what was approved. This is what, this is what we're asking. I don't see any trees in here. Yeah, you're right. It's gone from 4 to 2. And those were crepe myrtles.
Crepe myrtles.
Last two trees, right? And so, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, those stayed the same. 3 went to 2 here, so one of those went away and 4 went to 2. Two of those went away. So this, a general deduction, those, like 3 crepe myrtles and 17 magnolias.
So the, so the, so the removal of trees is 17 right there along the fence line? But then three others throughout the site?
So we were only required to have nine trees for our mitigation plan. So we just removed, you know, the ones that we had on there that were a little bit extra that we thought would be in the way of our cameras, like say on Building 11, that's a little bit too close to the. bit too close to the corner of the parking lot, so we can see it causing root issues there, and it's also in the way of one of the camera placements that we have.
Okay. Becky, would they be in compliance with that? Or Aubrey?
Do what?
Would they be in compliance with that, as far as the trees?
The nine mitigation trees are what was, what they were proposing to mitigate, so nine would be the minimum.
Those are the smaller trees, the crepe myrtles?
The mitigation trees should be three-inch trees.
Those considered class one?
Class one or class two.
Either one, okay.
Yeah, they can do either.
Yeah, they had 17 class one trees as a boundary layer, and then, I keep forgetting the number, but there was like seven or eight crepe myrtles, class two, and the number of crepe myrtles has dropped by three. Two in one area, one in another. So the direction is fewer trees, more fences, more barbed wire.
So we don't necessarily have a, an action item for reducing the number of trees, besides the...
I think that's the modified landscaping plan, the number four.
That falls under that, okay.
Yeah.
Do you have a plan for, that could add more cameras to your facility?
We can, it's just about running more conduit. We already have most of our conduit in the ground, so it's, but most of those buildings we already have conduit in, so it's just talking to our security camera guy to see if we can add more cameras, but it just makes the cost of everything go up.
The other, I guess another thing to consider is that y'all are mitigating the trees on this reserve that are...
For the next section.
That were for Reserve B.
Correct.
So any additional trees that they put on the next phase of the development would be over and above.
So none of these trees are mitigation trees, is what I'm hearing?
Yes, they're mitigating, so Reserve B is their next phase, and those are the trees that they're mitigating on this site, right?
Yeah.
Because they chose to mitigate them here.
Uh-huh. Okay.
Okay. So we went from, from 12 to nine mitigation trees, is what we're saying?
No, I think what we're saying is we are, we're only required to provide nine mitigation trees for the entire tracks of A and B. We're only developing A at this time, we're developing B later, and we're doing all of those trees now.
I got you.
Okay. I understand.
You good, Aubrey?
Yeah.
Okay. So for item 4B1, the addition of eight-foot high wooden opaque fence along the shared property line with Chevron from building A to the existing fence at discount inspection and break, is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Do we need any more discussion, or anybody want to say anything? No, okay, sorry.
All in favor? Opposed? Okay. The motion passes?
We just need a majority.
Okay, item 4B2, replace the previous eight-foot high opaque fence between buildings A and six, six and five, and part of the section between buildings five and three, with a six-foot high chain link fence with three strands of barbed wire, is there a motion?
Can we, just for clarification, it's not barbed wire, it's razor wire, correct?
Yes.
Okay, because there is a difference.
There is a difference.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any additional discussion? All in favor?
I do have additional discussion. Is it too late?
No, no.
It's too late?
Okay.
All in favor? One.
Marsha, you for it or against it?
Yeah, I did approve.
All against? The motion fails. Item 4B3, remove the one tree per 25 linear foot along the top bank of the pond, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? We have a motion, all in favor? One? Two? All opposed? Three? Motion fails. Okay, item 4B4, modified landscaping plan, is there a motion?
I move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second?
Can we discuss this?
Any additional discussion?
Yeah, this one's a little fuzzy to me, what we're voting on, on this one, because we've already kind of put all the individual items.
Right.
And so I'm a little, do you need a vote on this one to clarify what we would end up with as a decision?
So I, this would be to reduce from the 12 trees to the nine trees.
Oh, this would be for the second set of trees?
Has nothing to do with the other items we just listed.
Yeah, the landscape buffer was the previous item, so this would just be to reduce from the 12 to nine.
This is the crepe myrtles.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Can we discuss this a little bit more, because I don't think we delved into this enough, for me, anyway?
Right.
Yeah, so, so...
Hey, we have a, we had a motion, did we have a second?
We had a second.
Yes.
I was just checking.
Yes.
So the goal behind doing this, I didn't quite understand why the applicant wanted or needed to do this. Maybe you can explain that, Stephanie?
When the owner looked at the site, he looked at where the buildings were and decided, this is the kind of tree he wanted here, and this is the kind of tree he wanted here.
Right.
And then he thought, when we, I said, this is where we have these other trees planned, he said, no, that won't work, because we've got a camera here, it's going to block the camera, or hey, this...
Because this is also for camera access.
It's camera access and views.
So three trees in one area would be too much, two trees you can see through, is that the idea?
Well, no, those two trees are against the fence. This other camera is looking towards the parking lot and down the street, so it's getting the hole, so that other tree would be in, blocking the view of the camera, looking at the parking lot.
What I saw on this was there were already groups of trees, three areas where you were going to put crepe myrtles in, and you were leaving one alone, you were reducing one tree in one clump from three to two, and one from four to two, or something like that. So you're still leaving some trees there, but you're reducing the number.
Yes, and the locations.
And that's so, because you can see through two trees, but not four trees, is that the idea?
No, we actually moved where the other trees were, where the camera was, we took those out completely.
But in each area, there already, you had trees, you still have trees, you just have fewer trees.
Depends on the area, but yes.
Yeah, well, the three, okay, okay, I'm...
In front of building 11, there were trees on the southeast corner of building 11, we moved those completely, because they were blocking the camera view.
The only way I can, I can do this is, so here you went from, okay, you got rid of that one, and you kept these three.
Right, and this one we moved.
You got rid of one here.
We moved this one over here to screen the view.
You went from three to two, I thought.
Yeah, we have three of them.
Here you had, you have two, well, you, we have three.
That's a different kind of thing.
Oh, oh, that's a, oh, I'm sorry, I missed that.
One, two, three. We just moved that tree over.
Okay. And here you had four, now you have three.
Right.
And they're all there instead of out in front, and that's for access to the camp, the cameras. It sounds like a very stupid place. And then here you're leaving everything, you're not changing anything.
You get a little crazy.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So you're just basically moving, removing one or two trees and moving some around for access.
Yeah, I think they're, they changed a couple of the tree types, and then they're clustering them, so...
Yeah, right. Okay.
I think that class two crepe myrtles, aren't they?
They have crepe myrtles and magnolias.
Yeah, the class ones, the barrier trees were magnolias, and I think these trees that we're talking about on this are all crepe myrtles, I believe, except maybe one was...
The light gray ones are the magnolias.
Yeah, so we...
One magnolia in there.
Yeah.
We added the magnolias before they were not magnolias.
Yeah, added one magnolia and got rid of three.
Two magnolias and then got one of one crepe myrtle.
Yeah. Although all trees here are near and dear to my heart, I think I'm okay with, personally, I think I'm okay with this, but you guys, if you guys need to see these drawings, you're welcome to.
No worries.
Any other comments? Discussion? Okay, we have a, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously? Okay, 4B5, increase gate sizes to four-foot wide gates, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any additional comments or discussion? We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously. 4B6, modified fire lanes per discussion with Fire Marshal's Office, is there a motion?
Move.
I'll second.
Okay. We have, are, any further discussion? We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Passes unanimously. 4B7, move gate locations along the driveway, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any additional discussion? We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously. 4B8, move ADA parking space at 4500 FM 2351 near building one to meet maximum slope requirements, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any additional discussion?
Can you explain this one to me? I think I'm for it, I don't, it doesn't sound controversial, but I just don't understand it.
So for building one, you know, you have your building elevations, when they poured building one, they actually poured it slightly higher, so then we had to take the slope requirements for the ADA and move the spot a little bit further away, so the ramp would hit it at the right slope requirement.
Okay, yeah, I put this in the category of design development as well, but okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Passes unanimously. Item 4B9, replace, replace proposed six-foot aluminum fence with eight-foot opaque wood fence, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any additional discussion?
Can you remind me where this one is?
This one's back by building 11, so between 11 and building B, back there where the cluster of the trees changed.
This is on the entire opposite side of where we've been talking about.
Yeah, towards the back.
The top left of the site.
Yeah, I got it now, and so where is the...
It's a section of fence between the two buildings.
Okay, so connecting building 11 with building 10, or building...
11 and building B, correct?
Oh, and building three, so here, okay, I, some, I apologize, I didn't really look at this one. So, tell me what an aluminum fence looks like, I don't have a good sense.
It's a black rail fence, like the standard.
Okay.
And so the idea is that if we have an opaque fence on the side with Chevron, we're going to match that same fence type on both sides of the two office warehouse buildings in the front.
Okay.
To make it look the same.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Any additional comments?
Does anybody else need clarification on that? Is that only like 15 feet or something?
Mr. Bounce? Commissioner Conrad? Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, next we're on to discussions. Discuss overhead versus underground utilities.
Becky?
Yes, sir, so this is an item that the ordinance subcommittee had been looking at. We, well, we started it when you were still on the subcommittee, we now have Rich Sassen, Marsha Conrad, and Kathy Kerner, those are our three on our subcommittee, but we were talking about overhead utility lines to new developments versus underground utilities to new developments. Obviously, the overhead is unsightly, but then the underground costs more money, so we looked at a couple other cities, we had some talks, there was a, like a one-page handout in y'all's backup material, just kind of, you know, why are we looking at this, who is it going to affect? If we make any changes, do we make them citywide, do we just make them in the downtown district or the community overlay district? We kind of threw around a bunch of, a bunch of discussions. There are pros and cons of each one, so when it comes down to it, we kind of have a few different options, and we want to get the commission's feel before we get too far into the weeds on actually drafting an ordinance change. We also need to get senior staff input and probably workshop with city council, because it will impact developers. Our surrounding cities do it, so it's not that it can't be done, but, you know, each city's a little different, and we'll see how it goes, but the three options moving forward would be to prohibit new overhead utility lines. Our current ordinance says, I can't remember the exact wording, but it says any, any new utility service has to be underground, but what happens is on the right-of-way, so if the utility company has to add, you know, four or six poles to get to the property, they do that, and then they drop it underground and go to the building. So while the development itself is underground, it's still adding a bunch of things in the right-of-way overhead.
Basically, we're regulating a property owner, so once the power, and most, specifically power is the most common thing, once the power gets to their property, we require it to be underground, but we're not regulating the utility franchise from installing more overhead.
So, and the utility franchise will, they will install it either way, but they only cover a certain percentage, like, they have a standard, you know, we'll give you one pole and X amount of wire for this flat rate, and if you want to bury it or you need longer runs, then that's at the developer's cost. So like I said, we've, we've kind of got a couple options, you know, prohibit overhead, just let's go for it, let's clean it up, or maybe just prohibit certain areas or certain types, so like on 518, you've got them that go over 518, which are the most noticeable, and then you have the ones that run down, like, parallel with 518, so there's those two differences, or leave it how it is. So a couple of my thoughts were in the backup as well, but I'll let Rich kind of take it over from the subcommittee's viewpoint.
I just had a little diversion on this, it just came up, since Stephanie's still here, she didn't make the shrewd move of leaving. I noticed that they put up new power lines on their property to bring it across to where their, this area where we have, we're proposing, where we want to leave the trees, have power lines where they didn't formerly. Does that not apply to the industrial district?
No, because we took that out of the community overlay district.
Okay, so it's, so the only requirement to going underground is for COD?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And residences do it too routinely, but that's not a requirement associated with this, that's a subdivision requirement, I guess.
Yeah, I think these day, like, for subdivisions, we're not requiring it, but it's...
Everybody does it just because they do it, okay?
Well, I think it's safer, like, for storms and things like that.
Oh, yeah, it's better, no question, but I didn't know it wasn't, you could now put in a subdivision and have stringing wires to the houses if you wanted to.
You can, but any of the track builders don't, they...
No, I know nobody wants to, but I just, I didn't even know it was an option.
You could, yes.
Okay, interesting, okay.
Some of the older homes, like, on the Harris County side, I mean, some homes still have the hanging wires. Some of the older homes, like on the Harris County side, I mean, some homes still have the hanging wires to it.
Because I was really disappointed that you... Okay, thanks, waves from the back. I was disappointed that you chose not to bury that line, or for that matter, put, it doesn't matter, I'm on a different subject, so I should, I should go back to the main subject. Okay, yeah, I was surprised you didn't put the power on, have come into this unit near where you, where the power company comes in, instead of coming all the way across your property. Not an issue, sorry. Going back to your question or your comment, yeah, we did meet, we talked about this. There was, some of the committee thought we should just do it in the downtown district. Some of the committee thought we should do it everywhere in the COD on 528, 518. I guess the minor roads would still not be addressed. And basically, our goal today was to find out, the people that weren't there, how they feel. I think, so Karen's already weighed in, Kathy's already weighed in, sorry. I've kinda weighed in, I'd be interested to see what you guys, what the rest of the commission thinks. Because like Becky says, we need to get consensus of this group, then we need to get consensus with city, the city council, and it's a stepwise procedure. So any questions or thoughts you guys have in terms of where we should go going forward?
One thing, Becky, for everybody's information here, I knew you ran numbers at one point, the difference between cost, right?
Yes, sir, so just for kind of a guideline, I did ask Texas New Mexico Power to give me a price difference on a very high-range scenario. But for our property here at City Hall, if this was a commercial property and somebody was gonna come in and build it, I asked them to give me a price difference between if we went overhead or underground. The estimated cost to go overhead was $37,800. The estimate to go underground was $192,000. And you have to loop the system, and you have to require private easements, they won't let you do it in the right-of-way. So that's kind of my biggest concern, is there is a pretty significant price difference. And there is a level of land acquisition that developers are gonna have to go through. So, like I said, our sister cities do it, so it's not that it can't be done. We just have to make sure that if we're going to do it, that, that everybody's on board with it.
And the one thing I would add to that is, we're not requiring them to go underground, these, under these roads. We're just requiring them not to go overground. And so if they can get the power from the backside of the, to look for creative solutions, that would be the least expensive way to get this. And one of those might be finding an existing one that goes across and beefing up the wires on that. And having enough power to bring it over into the area. I, my view is that, once you put out the requirement, people will find creative solutions that won't be quite as expensive. This was actually brought up, surprisingly enough, by a developer who used to be on our board. He said, "I'm putting sewer lines underground, I'm putting water lines underneath 518, I'm spending a whole lot of money. Putting power would be minor." He said, "I think you should just require it." And I said, "That would require you." He said, "Yeah, I know." But, so...
I have a question directly related to this, to the numbers you just read. Is that dropping everything underground across the property? Or is that still leaving, like, for instance, there's, there's the old florist down the street, it's got overhead lines. So if we were talking about the same, the same scenario, that cost, is that for dropping it underground for the whole piece of property? Or is that leaving overhead and then going underground just for the building?
No, it wouldn't be to leave the overhead, so his...
So that's, like I'm used to doing houses and stuff, and we go underground most of the time. But that doesn't include anything outside of their property. So it might be that they have overhead power lines, so that cost to run it underground that the homeowner takes on is just for whatever stretch it is from, from the right-of-way to their property, to their house.
Which is, which is the code that we currently have.
Yeah, that's how we do it now.
That's what we have on the books right now.
And that's true with all the commercial that's existing.
In the downtown district and the community overlay district.
Okay, I was a little confused on that, and not sure where the cost, if they stop somewhere, but you got it, thanks.
Part of this is that we've been fighting for a long time trying to get down some wires, and one by one, they come down, and just kinda, ah, each time. Avoiding putting new ones up is easier than, than taking them down, it's very hard to get them down once they're up. And so, looking for opportunities like that. There was one question I had on the numbers, I meant to ask you about this before Becky offline. I believe in the last year or so, the city paid for a line to go across 518 to supply over near the park. And I remember Morad sitting in the meeting and saying, "Oh, yeah, we decided to put it in underground." And I was sitting in the back, and he said, "Mr. Sassen will be very pleased about that." I was kinda pulled out. And I said, afterwards, I said, "How much did you spend?" And I thought it was on the order of fifty or sixty thousand dollars, which I still thought was exorbitant and crazy, but it wasn't anywhere close to the hundred and ninety.
That, it hasn't happened yet, that is a fiber line that's going across, it's a fiber line that feeds the city specifically.
Oh, it's not a power line, it's a, it's a communication line.
It's fiber going for our secure network that's going across 518, and it's at where the Allbritton is being built. So the city entered into an agreement with Tanos Construction that whenever he does the Allbritton, they allotted him fifty or sixty thousand dollars if he would bury that line while he was doing construction. It caps out at fifty or sixty, but if it costs less than I...
I thought this was over here, right next to the, I'll do my homework on that, sorry.
Yeah, no, that's, that's down the other way.
Okay, okay.
I think that's one other thing, you know, point that Becky and I were talking about, when we were talking about, it's not just electricity. I think most of AT&amp;T's going underline, or underground, that's what, I bought, a lot of the work you've been seeing on 518 is AT&amp;T burying their lines. And then also FDEDC, some of the first money they spent was to get, it was on this side of 518. If I, if I remember, it was two separate projects that they did, and it was about a hundred or a hundred and ten thousand.
Yeah, one was eighty and one was a hundred and twenty thousand, there was two hundred thousand dollars of total to remove that one AT&amp;T line that went on the other side, you're absolutely right.
So they, so they buried the lines on this side to help clean up 518.
Right, and that was all bored the entire way. And it was twelve hundred feet in one case, and eight hundred feet in the other, it was, it was a long way.
Yeah, and also the new conduit for the pedestrian lighting that's going in on 518 has been put in underground. When Tech Dot did that project, they put in all the conduit. So we have conduit down both sides of 518 for the electrical for that. So I think we've done a good job of cleaning up 518. I think the other big thing is the big power lines on the other side of the road. But, I mean, that's millions, millions of dollars to replace, you know, to relocate those even a block back, or to go underground, so...
Just to finish that thought, I think we got an estimate from Tech Max for six million dollars to eliminate that, which we presented to FDEDC just to say, "If you ever get an extra six million..."
Well, to clarify, that was just the electrical, right?
That was the overhead power lines, getting rid of those, and actually split-feeding it around behind everywhere.
Richard, I have a question, if you don't mind. I didn't see anything on here about, like when, when they went in front of the Allbritton, digging all that up and burying it killed some of the oak trees. So I'm all for doing that, but I'm worried, I'm all for going underground, but I am worried about them killing trees and not having a provision to cover that.
This, this is to go underneath the road, that was going alongside the road. So I don't know if that really killed the trees or not, when we buried the AT&amp;T cable. It went along there, but they, but what we're proposing here is to not allow any more lines going across 518. And so there'd be no trees in the middle of 518 that'd be affected.
Well, no, I don't mean the middle, but, but still going underground, you're going to hit roots, you're going to kill something, and just need to consider that.
Yeah, that's a fair comment. The trees were, that tree was kind of an outlier, it was like right on the road, and they were very old. But you're right, it would, might have a negative impact on, on some of the vegetation alongside the road. That's fair.
I would say on the other side of that, though, there, underground, you're eliminating the trimming of the trees to get around the lines. Any other comments? You know, my initial thought was just make it happen, but then when you start looking at the cost, I kinda don't know where I sit on it right now.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think maybe the elimination of the lines going, like no new lines going across 518. I don't know the last time that they added any across 518, I think what's there is kind of what's there.
Yeah, we took a couple down when we did that AT&amp;T line, there were two that had been going across. But I think you're right, I don't know any new ones that have come in.
I think most of the new developments, like Tech New Mexico's getting the power from further back, like...
Right.
The adjacent blocks and bringing it to 518 from both sides.
I forget, did the Allbritton pull from behind, or they...
They're pulling from behind, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it, this may, like I said, we do have a code right now that says you can't add, you know, you have to go underground for new development. The poles in the right-of-way to reach the development is, I think, part of the problem. And then the other larger part is what's there. But everything that's there, that's not P and Z's purview, so...
Right.
It's been, it's been brought up over and over again, I just kinda would like to get some, some wheels on it and figure out.
The two examples of new poles would be...
528.
528, where Craig Carver's building was, they put in, which originally they put in three new poles, and we kinda threw a fit about that. And they, they took down two of them and just left one. And then Clear Creek Community Church put in a few new ones around, but once it gets on their property, it's underground, but...
But they went along the 518, 528 right-of-way?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so I guess the goal today was just to see what the consensus of the people who weren't in the committee meeting feel, and which way, and if they say, "I still have to think about it," that's okay too, but did you speak up just to kinda say what each of you kinda, which way you're inclined toward?
I would like to give it more thought, but absolutely all four know new poles. And I understand, like, for the church, they had to bring in an intermediate pole so that they could drop and go underground, I understand that. Still don't like having the poles along the street, but that's a different argument.
Yeah, and they went along the street because otherwise they'd have to go on their property, and then they'd have to go underground.
Right, so I'd definitely like to see it cleaned up. I think some of the bigger developers that are developing, Tanos and Banfield and whatever, that's just part of the cost of doing the larger developments, and they, they understand that. Plus, they want their places to look good and not have those wires. It's the little guys that it's gonna hurt, and that's where I'm kinda torn on, on how do we, how do we fix that? I don't know the answer to it yet.
Okay.
But I'm all for cleaning it up.
And the second half of the question, before we go off, permission arrives, is, do you feel that way in the downtown district? Do you feel it on all the COD areas on 518, 528, 2351, or all the roads in Friendswood, in theory?
I think I would probably draw the line at the COD. There's not a lot left after that, except the industrial section.
In a subdivision, it'd be okay, you're thinking, you're thinking.
Need to think about that.
Yeah, I mean, think about Lundie Lane or some of these outlying areas.
We don't really have any commercial there, at least not right now. So I'm thinking more like Friendswood Link, where we've got a few little strip centers there. And we definitely want the power to go underground, but should we make them drop everything underground? To me, that, you, they should have already budgeted to go underground from the street, but they may not have budgeted to take a couple of poles out. Not sure how I feel about that, if that would be on them or not.
Okay.
I'd say my current feeling is the community overlay district, that's where I'd go right now.
Then you'd support it?
Yes.
Correct. I agree, Tom.
Okay.
Thank you.
How good? I think so. The one thing I would end with is, every day I walk with two other officials with Friendswood for breakfast, down 528 toward to Whataburger, and if you notice on that area, there are no overhead lines. For whatever reason, there are no overhead lines, and it just changes the entire look of the city. It just makes it look like a modern city. And when you see wires everywhere, like they're taking out wires now around the stoplights, it looks great, I think, my personal view. And it just makes the city look like a modern city instead of a, you know, thing that had been put together, so... Next time you're over in that area, look at, just stop for a second, take a deep breath, and say, "This is what, you know, we kinda are looking as a vision someday."
Wasn't there a photograph where someone photoshopped all the overhead lines out, like looking down, was that you that did that?
That was actually my daughter, but I'll take credit, yeah.
I remember seeing that, and that was a huge...
Yeah, I probably should have given that to Becky just to show here what, what the size of the prize is.
That was a great visual.
That, that was good, but you also brought up a good point with the, the new lights going across 518, that's cleaned it up a bit too.
Every, it's getting better. I think everyone says that in the city, you talk to them, it's getting better, and it looks nicer, and one by one, we get rid of these. When we first started, I first started getting involved in this, there were all Christmas lights left over from the 2000s. It was still there twenty years later, fifteen years later. And we asked the question, "Can you take those down?" And the city said, "I guess so, sure, we haven't lit them up in fifteen years." And so those came down, there was a lot of, you know, visual clutter is what I call it, so, anyway. So what I'm hearing is the consensus is, eh, probably, and probably in the COD, is what this group would kinda support. That's good to know.
Yeah, I just feel that we need to really get creative in trying to find a solution that is not gonna be so expensive.
Right.
And not allow for it to happen anymore.
I agree with what they said earlier, is that, once they start doing this, they're going to find another way that's cheaper. And so, and...
Yeah, I don't think it's as much as setting, setting that, I don't think it's so much as setting that standard, but letting the developer become creative the way they do it.
Yeah, don't, don't mandate underground, you mandate no overhead, and then figure it out, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I think I've gotten a feel, kind of, let's work on, stop the bleeding, and then hopefully, a different, a different group at a different time will...
So what would be the plan forward, Becky? The committee would then draft actual written modifications to the ordinance, and then bring it back to this body?
We definitely need to get a workshop with council to get their feel on it. I don't want the subcommittee or the commission to spend a whole lot of time on it, if it's not something that we can actually move on.
So you think that's the next step, is a workshop?
Yeah, we, I can...
We probably need to put together some draft legislation, but yeah, okay. Yeah.
And we can do a rough draft, I don't know when it's gonna be, because we've got a lot of big-ticket items coming up with council, so it, it may not be in the next couple...
No, but I'm just trying to understand what the next step is, and the next step, I think you're right, we sure don't wanna get going down this path and find out city council says no.
Right. Because I think, I think everybody agrees, we want it cleaned up, we want it to look nice. But like Marcus said, you know, the big developers, they just do it, they just do it, that's just part of their, their job. But some of these smaller, you know, we want mom-and-pop shops, things like that, it could be a make-or-break deal. So we just kinda, gotta look at all sides.
Yeah.
Good.
Thank you.
Very good, appreciate the work. Another tough, tough subject.
Oh, I had, I'm sorry, if we're still on it, what is lower voltage drop because reactance is lower? That was one of your pros or whatever.
You're gonna have to find an electrical engineer and ask them that.
I figured you just copied that off a piece of paper somewhere, okay.
No, it's something about the, something about the runs of wire and how far it can carry...
Right, how much voltage drop they have.
Before it starts dropping.
Attenuation?
Hey, yeah, ask Commissioner Bounce over there.
You're asking the wrong person.
You're looking in the wrong direction.
Is the reactance lower on underground versus overhead, or do they just make bigger wires?
Well, it depends on the wire, it depends on how much twist is in the wire and things of that nature.
Yeah, I'm just surprised underground would have that as a benefit, I just, I didn't expect to see that.
Well, it doesn't get as much interference from other wires that are up there.
Oh.
Well, the underground effect probably cools it a bit too.
Yeah, but what you're saying is you don't get as much interaction from, from other things, you have, the dirt actually acts as a barrier to the...
Yes, it acts as insulation.
Yeah, interesting, thank you. Yeah, interesting, thank you.
Okay, everybody good? Item six, communications. Uh, first is announced that the NICS Planning and Zoning Commission regular meetings have been scheduled for Thursday, July thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, and Thursday, July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. Uh, item B, uh, staff updates. Becky? Aubrey?
I don't have anything.
Karen? Okay. Um, city council updates from our liaison? Thank you. Um, okay, then we'll just go to, um, general comments from commissioners, about, Commissioner Bounce?
No, thank you very much.
Mr. Sassen?
Uh, I was gonna just remind the newer members of our committee, uh, that if you ever have any questions on things, sometimes we get complicated things, like today was a fairly complicated issue. Uh, Becky and Aubrey will bend over backwards to help you understand the subtleties. She will, they will print out twenty-four by thirty-sixes in color for you, so you can understand what's going on. Uh, so use them, they are actually looking forward to the opportunity to make sure we make the best decision possible, and so, they are great, and so take advantage that we have great people supporting us. That's all I have.
Mr. Conrad?
Well, I do appreciate that very much, I try to get all of the information and somehow it's just kicking me off of the system, so. But yeah, thank you.
Mr. Rose?
Yeah, a couple things, first of all, I'll piggyback on that, you guys are stellar, and I know y'all probably get tired of seeing me sometimes. Y'all always make time for me, and you always are very helpful, so, kudos to them, you can pass that along to city council. Uh, I mentioned the, the flag signs last time we were here, and I haven't seen flag signs in at least a week, so, yay. Good job, whoever that needs to go to. And piggybacking on that, maybe we move on to the next subject for me, which would be like parking and shared parking and parking matrices. Maybe we could, uh, create a subcommittee, I don't know, you guys tell me how to do it. Uh, I'm sure it's in our purview, and at some point, present that to, to council and FDEDC, and maybe workshop that as well, because I think there's benefits to, uh, if we can figure out the parking thing, like most smart, small cities have, make it more walkable. You know, I, I think it's piggybacking on the, the beautification of the downtown district. And I'd just like to start some dialogue, I know we've had discussions before in the past, but haven't heard much lately about it, but I wanna keep that up there on the list.
I, I'd definitely go with that, I think that'd be a good, good discussion to have. Um, anyhow, I don't think everybody realizes all the work you guys do behind the scenes, so thank you. Um, other than that, I don't have anything additional.
Tom, one more thing, also, along with everybody's kudos, I'd like to thank our AV person back there. She's, uh, always here and always helpful.
Okay, with that, thank you everyone for attending this evening, and the June twenty-second, twenty twenty-three Planning and Zoning Regular Meeting is now adjourned.